All right, and so the meeting is now being recorded, just for everybody's information. This is a public meeting of the Springfield City Council's COVID-19 Response Subcommittee. I'm City Councilor-at-Large Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Committee. Thank you all for joining us today for our weekly update. And we're actually dedicating today's meeting to discussing issues related to housing impacts from the pandemic. We know this is an issue the City Council and members of the community have been paying close attention to from the beginning of the pandemic, the concern, and very serious experience that many constituents are going through as the result of the pandemic, of course, impacting individuals' jobs and ability to work and collect income, and therefore translating to impacting their housing security, and of course, also individuals who are already experiencing difficult housing situations prior to the pandemic. What we wanted to do today was talk with some of the city departments and community organizations that are doing work around this issue and get an idea of where we are in terms of the various types of assistance programs that have been rolled out, both by the state and by the city of Springfield, and also to get an idea of how that's really playing out in the real world, in the courts and in people's homes, and then also to understand better about what we can be advocating for. So we're joined by City Councilor Malo Brown, City Councilor Victor Dabila, City Councilor Justin Hurst, City Council Vice President Tracy Whitfield, some members of the media, and also our invited guests. I think it is probably appropriate to begin with the Director of Housing for the City, Jerry McCaffrey, and also Tim Sheehan from the Department of Economic Development, just to get an idea of so far of what you're seeing from the perspective of the city. And then I think we will probably move, incorporate TJ Plant, Director of Finance, and Melanie Kobe, the Budget Director, into understanding the financial side of what's already been expended, and then we'll move to hear from some of the community organizations, including Springfield No One Leaves, Community Legal Aid, and also we will have Wayfinders joining the call shortly to talk about what they're seeing in the community. So we'll start, recognize Jerry, and let Jerry take it from here.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you.
Hi, Jerry.
Thanks, Jesse. Hi. I think, so I guess, you know, we started seeing people getting behind in rent related to COVID very soon after it happened, after the shutdown, but there was a moratorium put in place in the state that extended through October 18th of this year. So locally, we decided to try to get as much money out as possible before that, before the moratorium ended, in order to let people, help people start getting caught up in payments prior to the moratorium ending. So money was made available both by the city, and the city added to existing funds that the state was already providing, you know. So in Springfield, the primary organization that provides money for arrears, rent arrears, is Wayfinders. We decided to support Wayfinders and add more money to what they already had from the state. They had just, you know, a normal state allocation initially. So we added to that, beginning in July, I think we saw large demand on those funds, and I see Janet Viggo here from Wayfinders, who I'm sure will speak to this, but sort of large, the biggest growth in applications, starting in September, sort of leading up to the moratorium being lifted, and into October, and then continuing. Since October, the moratorium was lifted, there is a lesser protection on the federal level from the CDC, which is still in place, but does not have the same level of protection as the state did. There have been continuing, there is continuing demand for rental assistance. And I see Rose here, who often, I know, has lots of data from evictions. I actually looked up some eviction data as well, just seeing that since the moratorium ended, as of the data I looked at today, there's been 504 cases filed in Springfield that include non-payment case, non-payment claims, and 98 executions issued. I think what, from my perspective, I see that there is money available because, so the city put some in initially that augmented what's there every year. In October, as the CARES Act, I mean, I'm sorry, as the moratorium was lifted, the state put significant resources in, also into Wayfinders. So at that point, there was a lot more money, but the moratorium ended at the same time the money was issued, so it took some time for the agency to get staffed up and ready to really be responsive at the scale, which became enormous very quickly. In addition to the state putting significant funding in, there has since been more allocations from the feds. They, the first rounds of COVID relief they gave had some rental assistance. The round they did in December had rental assistance, and what is going to the Senate for vote this week has another significant amount of rental assistance. So we, I will say, my sense is that it is not that there is not enough money. I think one of the issues is people knowing about whether the money is there, being able to access it, because there's sometimes delays in accessing it, I would imagine, and I think another reason maybe, most of the funds are related to where there are, where there are gaps in income due to COVID, and I don't know the degree to which people may have trouble relating whatever has happened to COVID. So those are sort of key issues, I see. I want to also say, we've also made mortgage assistance available. The mortgage assistance the city has made available is not run at, our rental assistance has been spent out at this point, our mortgage assistance has not. We also made that available through Wayfinders. Again, our thought was, let's put it in a centralized place that's running multiple pots of money, so that people apply in one place and are likely to try to get help, rather than, you know, going to multiple places to apply. I think one other thing that's significant that I have seen is there has been a large demand for utility assistance. So as people were getting behind in rent and mortgage payments, they were also unable to make utility payments. Both, the, all the pots of money that Wayfinders is administering also enables them to get caught up, enables them to make payments there. So payments are being made to, for gas, electric, water, various utilities. I think that's kind of the big picture from where I'm sitting. I guess I'll pause there and see if you, if there's any questions.
Sure. How about we hear from TJ and from Tim as well, and then we'll do questions kind of from the city side, and then we'll move to some of the community organizations. Tim, did you want to add anything to Director McCafferty's?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Jerry to review the two pools of money that we put into the pot that went to Wayfinders, because one was much more significant than the other.
Yes. So we, we were able to provide home funds, so those are, they're federal funds that actually had not been allocated for COVID, which was why we were able to get them out the door quickly. We provided $1.7 million to Wayfinders of those funds, and then we used CDBG money that was COVID-related for mortgage assistance, and that was $389,000. The rental assistance, as I said, has been spent out. The mortgage assistance has not been spent out at this point. Of the 389 allocated, they've expended about $249,000. So I think we're, and I will say, you know, we also have pots of money that are coming in under federal sources, Home, CDBG, ESG, and I think we're watching these pots to see where they're emptying, to be thinking about where we would be needing to be putting money into the, in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I think that is the important point, is watching what's being drawn down and trying to figure out what the best, you know, investment strategy is going forward with the new funding as it's made available, to ensure that, you know, we're replenishing where there's real need.
Yes, certainly, and maybe that is a good note to bring TJ and Melanie in on, because that was going to be my question, is, you know, seeing as how the rental assistance has been spent down, and the mortgage assistance is being spent down, I'm wondering what the administration's plans, if any, are to replenish those, and then from what sources that that might be possible. Because I think that one of the things I've noticed when we initially looked at these pools of money after you had all made them available, was it seemed like people were able to access the city funds more quickly than they were able to access the state funds. When we, I did a town hall on housing assistance in December, and we were noticing that as well. So TJ and Melanie, what are your thoughts on that, or the administration's thoughts?
So, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll start now, let Melanie fill in some of the blanks as my point person for the coronavirus relief funding aspect. So I will share my screen in a second, just to show some of the grant stuff that we have spent, just so everyone can kind of see them black and white. But I want the committee to understand that during the whole summertime, up until close to December 30th, we were under a deadline to spend CARES money by December 30th, 2020. So we were in a rush to move the money out as quickly as possible, get it to the partners that needed it, that could spend it, that could help, you know, alleviate, whether it's small business, whether it's housing, whether it's homeless assistance, all of this is happening at, you know, a rapid pace, because we were trying to spend as quickly as we could. In addition to that, we wanted to make sure that we had FEMA cover all the eligible expenses as it related to the tent, the homeless tents, the homeless population, some of the other things that FEMA would pay for. Usually FEMA pays 75%, the city would pay 25%, we earmark money from the CDBG funding to pay the 25% portion of it. Since January, however, we found out that FEMA is going to cover 100% of the costs that they deem eligible. And what does that mean? I mean, there's more money available for the programs like this and other CDBG-eligible small business, nonprofit assistance, all those things that we're trying to do to get the money out there. In addition, the deadline was extended to December 31st, 2021, so that gives us another, just under a year or so to spend it, so we're able to be strategic. So what we're trying to do is map out all the revenue sources, all the spending needs, and we come up, and we'll come up with a game plan. And the more money we can push off onto the federal government, the state government, and we can free up in our own flexible grants, that's what we're planning on using to kind of, you know, figure out another allocation, whether it's rental assistance, mortgage assistance, whatever it may be. Now, if I have the ability to share my screen, I'll just kind of walk you through where we're at, so.
Are you able to do that, TJ?
I'm trying. Can you see that?
Yep.
So as Jerry absolutely said, we have a number of grants and a number of contracts. This breaks it down about as detailed as we can get through our MUNA system. I believe Jerry and others would have more information on kind of what it's spent on, and we can look at some more detail within the invoices. But Wayfinders mortgage assistance, as Jerry said, was 389,000. We spent 249,000. The rental assistance, 1.7 is fully expended. We have the ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant, Round 1 and Round 2, and we have contracted amounts of 4.4 million, nearly 4.5 million, with New North Citizens Council, Catholic Charities, YWCAO, CSO, and Friends of the Homeless. That's more for the emergency grant stuff. In addition, we got entitlement money through the Hopewa that we're sending, about 101,000. We've spent 64,000. So as Jerry said, money isn't necessarily the issue as of this point. Right now, the issue really is making sure that spending is targeted where it's most needed. I know I have a lot of conversations with Tim Sheehan about kind of where do we go when we free up money on the CDBG. Melanie, I don't know if you kind of know off the top of your head, that decision to have FEMA pay 100%, do you have a ballpark estimate of what that means for us in terms of money now available to be put towards other programs? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine. It's about almost $2 to $3 million. Keep in mind also that we've only submitted right now two applications to FEMA for expenses from March through September 15th, so we actually haven't submitted anything past that date yet, because we're waiting on them to provide us with feedback essentially on either of those applications as to what they're going to fund, what they're not, before we start working on a third, so it'll potentially be much more than that.
And the key is for us to reclass all the expenses we had on other grants and put that onto the FEMA, and then next FEMA obligation, project worksheet, to then free up even more money available for programs similar to this.
TJ and Melanie, just the recast, that class that we went through just last week or the week before, I mean, that meant, you know, almost, I think, Melanie, if I'm not mistaken, about $400,000 coming back.
Yeah, I think it was like 300 to 400,000. So what Tim Sheehan is mentioning is that there were expenses that we were able to move out of the very grants that TJ has right now, that he's sharing, that are mostly like the grants that are under Jerry and Tim's departments. We're able to free that funding from there, because those expenses were eligible under FEMA. So if FEMA can pay for that, then we could free up the money under these programs to provide more services.
So I mean, that's just an example of, you know, just this, you know, our universe, Jerry and I, you know, that's a pretty big number coming back just off of the FEMA reimbursement.
So I want to bring in, I see Council Whitfield, Chairwoman of the Finance Committee, has a question. Councilor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about, no, actually, I have a request. Can you all send us, the council, the amounts or the dollar amounts that was freed up? Because I asked about federal money, and that was, that came into the city, and I guess because I used the wrong terminology, I didn't know that it was FEMA, which is still federal, no one in the finance department seems to know what I was talking about. This is what I was talking about, because there's money freed up. So I would like to know the total amount of money that was freed up. You don't have to put it by department, but I would like to know all the money that is going to be freed up, and this freed up money that is reclassified to the grant, does that go back to the general fund, or does it stand in the department?
It stays with the grant. So Council, that's actually a great question. So the FEMA stuff was just signed by President Biden, I believe, in mid-January, that said all COVID-related expenses will now be 100% covered by FEMA, and that just reached out to us probably a week or two ago, or maybe three weeks, so saying that that's happening. We've had to go back in and look at all of our invoices and all of our expenditures. If I was to just guess, between the reclassing of the money that has been on these grants and the 25% match we were holding, I would say it's probably close to a $5 million swing of the money that will stay in each of the grants that we have received to date, to be spent on the program that's set forth in the grants terms and conditions.
So you reclass money off of one grant or several grants back to the FEMA?
Correct.
Reclassification, so none of it is general fund money that was reclassed, it's all grant?
Correct.
Money?
Correct.
Okay.
We also have a deficit spending account, as you recall, where if we don't know what the grant is, we charge it onto that deficit spending account, and then what we do is we reclass that over to either CARES or FEMA. So the expenses that you see on the reports that we submitted, where the grants are showing like actual expenses, those are the reclasses that have been moved on to there.
Okay, and for the deficit spending account, have you reclassed most of the expenses that were on there already?
Yeah, so what we're doing is, as, most of the expenses that are being charged on Fund 9205 are either FEMA or CARES eligible, so the way that CARES does their reporting, I have to report quarterly what the expenses are for the period that they're asking for. So once those are done, then we reclass over the quarterly expenses that we reported over to CARES. With regards to FEMA, those, we're still waiting on FEMA. Unfortunately, we've submitted two applications to them, it's been about five months, and we're still waiting on a final response from them. So as soon as we get response on what they will be paying for those, those will also be reclassed.
Thank you. My final thought or question. TJ, can you please send us the spreadsheet that you just had up? And then I have a question about, there was a line item that said outreach, and it said nothing was expended yet. What was that?
Oh, let me pull that one up.
So that was Street Outreach.
Street Outreach, thank you.
So the ESG CV grant is Coronavirus Emergency Solutions Grant Funds. We have a contract with Catholic Charities, and they have a subrecipient Mercy Hospital, where they are doing street outreach, placing people in hotel rooms, and then helping people find housing and giving them rental assistance for, under ESG, they can give up to one year's rental assistance, they're combining it with some other homeless programs, in some cases to give even more than one year. The street outreach, there is some confusion, so they have hired, this is, there is a nurse and now two community health workers, and their salaries are supposed to be split between the hotel shelter program, because they actually provide staffing to that shelter, as well as street outreach. They're doing both, and we saw in the, there has been a delay in Catholic Charities billing us, they have spent more than this that they have not billed us for, but they had billed it all to the shelter purpose and not to the outreach purpose. So the outreach is happening, it just hasn't been billed to us yet.
Thank you for that explanation, Jerry, I really appreciate it. I am definitely going to watch this recording, but I do have another 5 o'clock meeting, that's regular on Tuesdays, so Council Letterman, thank you for letting me get my questions out, and I'll have more questions from you guys at the Finances meeting next week, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Whitfield, and we have a question from Councilor Dabila, and then if there's any other questions from Councilors specifically for TJ, Jerry, and Tim, I'd ask we take them now, they'll still be here, but I want to bring in some of the community organizations as well and hear from them. So Council Dabila?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. Quick question regarding to the, to the grants that we have. Do we have a timeline in which we must spend this money by?
Yes.
They all vary, the timelines. A lot of them are through the end of this calendar year, and then some of them go even after then, so they all vary in the dates that expire.
Thank you. One of the things that kind of jumped out to me, Jerry, if I understood you correctly, you were saying that there has been 504 cases filed with housing courses since the moratorium was lifted, and 98 executions, which means that it's roughly over 19% evictions. I'm just wondering, maybe this could segue for Rose, which I believe I saw her on the, on the call. How does that number compare, the 19% now, since the eviction ended, since the moratorium ended, to pre-COVID times?
I think, Council Dabila, that probably is a, is a good, a good question to bring, unless Jerry, unless you had it.
Right.
One thing I can say is the volume of the evictions is down over pre-COVID times, but I do not know that, I don't know that percentage.
Okay, that's fine. And so let me go to my other question.
I don't know.
What is happening to these people that get evicted? Were we doing any kind of follow-up? What's, what's going on with them?
We have, so I think we're hoping that a lot of them are connecting to Rapid Rehousing Assistance, you know, so they, they move from the type of assistance that is pre-eviction to post eviction. Post eviction is also our largest agency, is Wayfinders, although there's definitely a role for Catholic Charities. They are able to provide startup rental assistance for someone to move into a new place. They are our entree to homeless services, but we're usually trying to avoid people becoming homeless and getting them rental assistance to get them started up elsewhere. So the hope is that's where they're going. But some people, you know, resolve by moving in with family, and some people alter.
Right, but I'm, well, I'm sure, Jerry, but I'm concerned for those people that may fall to their cracks. But are we doing any, for the city side, are we doing any coordinating with the courts to refer to these people to say, hey, you might be able to get assistance from Rapid Rehousing? Are we doing any kind of referral with these people?
Catholic Charities has a presence in the court, and I think Wayfinders does as well. They're both in the eviction court to provide assistance before, during, and after.
Very well, and I think, well, we're going to be getting that report from TJ in a little while, this press that he put out. Now, I heard, I did get a concern from a constituent that he had applied to the mortgage assistance, and it took him like six months to hear back. I believe he told me there was some sort of an issue with Wayfinders with the turnover rate or something. It's, our things are with Finders, I believe, six months, six months seems to be a little long time.
Do you want me to start this answer, or Wayfinders is also on the phone?
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah, I think we should move Council Dabila into the community organizations, because I think they're going to be able to give us a better insight into what's really going on in the courts.
Yeah, that's right, and that will be my last question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we'll come back, Council Dabila, to you when we get to Wayfinders, because I know several of us are curious about that. So thank you for that overview, Director McCafferty, TJ, and Tim. TJ, I just wanted to just circle back for one second. So it does sound like you are looking now to replenish those funds, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. So what we're going to do is, once we have a sense of what FEMA will actually cover, is put together a game plan to replenish funding for other stuff that is clearly the biggest need in the city as we could move forward.
What's our timeline to see more funds available?
You could get FEMA to move faster, now that's our biggest challenge right now. FEMA's had it for quite a while, for the first two subscriptions, not subscriptions, submissions, that's our biggest thing that's hold up, and they finally are getting engaged. We're pushing Congress and Neil's office to get them to help us move it along, that once we know what they say yes to, that's when we can start moving stuff back and around and coming up with the next plan.
And also, if we see the, the next CARES Act passed, I presume there will be funds in that?
I would imagine so, let's see what happens when the Senate finishes up taking up the bill this week, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, it's pretty clear that if something passes, there'll be direct home funding coming back into the city through that.
Okay, so let's move, it's 4:36, and we have a 5 o'clock general government meeting. So let's, let's move to Rose at Springfield No One Leaves. Rose, if you could introduce yourself, I think all the councilors are familiar with your organization, and if you could share with us really what is going on in the courts with individuals being able to access these funds, and what type of assistance you're providing, and what we might be able to be doing, doing more, Rose.
So as Jesse said, my name is Rose Webster-Smith. I'm the Executive Director of Springfield No One Leaves. My numbers are a little different than, than Jerry's, though. I actually have 765 eviction cases filed for the city of Springfield that have a non-payment component to it. So understanding the process that, you know, that's not all the eviction cases that are filed. So understanding the process that, you know, that's not all the eviction cases that are filed in Springfield. That's just cases that have, that are either classified as non-payment, no fault with the non-payment issue, or cause with a non-payment issue. And then there's also 150 homeowners that are in, that have private loans that are in danger of foreclosure in the city. You know, like Jerry said, there's been 98 executions. We're seeing a lot of defendants being defaulted in the court, meaning most likely they don't understand Zoom or have a process for it. And right now, unless you know to go to the actual court and ask them to utilize their public computer that's in the courthouse. There's been some talks about the Eastfield Mall being a proposed Zoom hotel for the courts. I would caution that as if someone's struggling to pay rent or mortgage to think that they have extra money to take a bus all the way up to the Eastfield Mall when the bulk of Springfield's evictions are in the 01107, 01105, 01103 sections of the city, the metro area in South End and the North End. Liberty Heights are really getting hammered and those are the most expensive bus routes to get to the Eastfield Mall. Wayfinders has been great. They always have somebody that's on the Zoom hearings, you know, that can verify applications that have been submitted. They can bear, they can help a tenant apply for rental assistance. The tenancy preservation program is another tool that can be utilized along with Catholic charities. It's really getting out into the community and making sure that people know how to use Zoom, understand how to apply to Wayfinders. I know Wayfinders, they're dealing with a huge, huge amount of applications because the need is so great here. And many homeowners don't know that they can apply and that they're eligible for, you know, that. I will say that many people don't know that A, Springfield put money in for homeowners and B, that they're, they can access that $10,000. So we've been doing a lot of outreach to the homeowners that we know that are in danger of foreclosure. We outreach to every tenant in Western Mass who has an eviction case filed against them so that they understand Zoom. We open up our office so that, because we are in the South End, so I will meet them in our office so that they can attend their Zoom hearing and have an advocate there with them. Community Legal Aid is finally staffed up. I know people are seeing the reports that are coming out from the state. More people are getting attorneys than what's in that. It's a slow process for them to get caught up. And again, just like Wayfinders, you know, Community Legal Aid had to hire. And with all of that money being delayed, it took them longer to hire. But I do want to say that, you know, the $420 million from the last stimulus is in Massachusetts. But I want to caution the city because that's earmarked as rental assistance. It is not going to help your homeowners. And right now, because of the federal protections, there's over 300 homeowners that are, have federal-backed loans that are in danger, that when those protections lift, those foreclosures and those evictions for post-foreclosure homeowners will begin to move. So you're going to be having tenants displaced and homeowners at the same time. Until, I know that in the new bill that's in the Senate that we're waiting to hear on, there's $9 billion allocated for homeowners. But there's going to be a huge gap where, you know, homeowners are not going to be able to access those funds.
Rose, thank you so much. If there are any questions for Rose, we would invite councilors to raise their hand. And Rose, to Councilor Davila's point, those 98 executions, you had mentioned that some people are being defaulted because they're not able to actually access the hearing. How many of these do you think are the results of that? Or what do you think is causing the actual 98 executions? That is stopping them from, you know, not just being able to, you know, access the assistance and therefore avoid the eviction?
So I think there's a multitude. We very graciously have a very progressive housing court. So some of these are cases that were stalled before, so they were filed prior to. Some of these are people that are being defaulted. And some of these cases unfortunately are understanding that a cause eviction, so if you're, if you're behind on rent, that's a lease violation and you can be evicted for cause. And that is a way for landlords to get around the CDC moratorium and the protections under the Chapter 257 of the Acts of 2020. So those three issues are why you're seeing executions. Until we get data from the sheriff, we're not going to know how many of those executions have been levied. And that's only if his office levied those. As most of you on the call know, constables can actually, can also levy a physical move out, which those are much harder to track.
Thank you, Rose. Any questions for Rose? And Rose, could you maybe send that, if you send that data over, I'll share it with the rest of the councilors, especially if you have the ZIP code data, I think would be very helpful.
So I actually have it on map. It's mapped through all the city neighborhoods. So I have a KML that goes over Google Maps that puts all the city into neighborhoods. So you can break it down by ZIP code and neighborhood. I will share it with you and you can forward it out.
Thank you so much. And one other piece that comes to mind is, do we know of any cities that are, you know, making community centers or something available for folks to access Zoom? Who may not otherwise, I mean, I appreciate you opening your office, but I know you guys have limited resources.
Yeah, I haven't heard of any yet. There was a lot of talk before the moratorium lifted about these Zoom hotels. I know that MGM was considered a possible location, but nothing has come into fruition where people can get access to technology. And again, you know, it's really hard, especially if you're, you have three kids at home doing remote learning and you try to get on Zoom for your court hearing, you will become unstable and get kicked off.
Okay, we're definitely going to explore, explore that piece of it further following the meeting. Thank you, Rose. Stay with us. I don't see any questions yet, but they may come. And we have two more folks with us we want to hear from. We have Wayfinders and we also have Jane Edmundston from Community Legal Aid. I think we'll bring Attorney Edmundston in first and then finish with Wayfinders because I think they'll have quite a bit to present on. So Attorney Edmundston, could you talk with us about what Community Legal Aid is doing with individuals facing eviction and also share, you know, your experience in the courts?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jane. I'm one of the housing attorneys at Community Legal Aid and I are supervisor, housing staff there. So we're able to provide legal defense to tenants and former homeowners facing eviction. And that can range from assistance through advice to kind of full representation throughout the entire court process. And that's for all types of evictions, whether it's for non-payment of rent or other reasons. And in addition to our attorneys, we also have a number of what we call case management staff, which are kind of like housing navigators that are helping people connect to Wayfinders and kind of complete the RAFD applications, connect to other income stabilization supports. Certainly, utility assistance is big this year. I kind of chalk that up to everyone being home all day, right? And the heat, the lights, the water is all on, right? It's all being used. And also people are just suffering more than before. I will say, in terms of legal defenses in the court, we did lose the Strong State Moratorium in October. And so we're left with the much more narrow CDC moratorium. It only affects a certain percentage of people in a certain percentage of cases. The state protections, what Rose referred to as Chapter 257, which meaningfully in Housing Court allow for a continuance of a case. If there's a pending RAFD application and a claim for rent, that has proven to be pretty powerful, I would say, for our tenants, right? There's always been this kind of disconnect between the potential timeline of a case in court and the potential timeline of a RAFD application. And I think that has really helped to give all of us a little bit of breathing room to make sure those things are lining up. You know, there are still challenges with people being able to fully access RAFD. And a lot of it is, you know, the state requirements, though loose, can still be quite burdensome. So for in terms of people not just knowing about it, but being able to kind of satisfy all the documentation. One, I'll say a few challenges, I think is one, that people's arrears is starting to creep up to be more than $10,000, right? And so if we cap out RAFD at 10 and we even try to cobble together some other resources, we're still not quite meeting people's needs in terms of fully curing a rental arrears. And the other thing is people are still not back to work. And so if we're looking forward, people's income is still really, really low. And the RAFD program has been more and more flexible in terms of being able to use it for kind of forward-looking rental statements. And that has been hugely important for many families. But those are going to end and there's still a number of families that don't even have enough RAFD left over to put towards forward-looking rent. So I think that is an area of focus in terms of kind of increasing the overall arrears package. One quick note about executions, I would say the, in terms of comparing the overall rate of executions this year to last, I think the court, for the first time, is more holistically compiling how many executions are issued. And so we may, that may be a comparator that we don't quite have yet. But I do think there's a new focus on that. The other thing about executions, right, and those are kind of, that's like the last step, the legal paperwork to move folks out, is that number is probably an undercount and an overcount. Meaning many, many, many people move out before a court case is filed. They move out during a court case. They agree to move out in a court case because they feel they have no other option and move out far earlier than the landlord needs to seek that final step of getting the paperwork. So that's the undercount. And the overcount is sometimes an execution is given to a landlord that they do not use. Like somehow, you know, there have been many times, Wayfinders, legal defense, we have come rushing in kind of when the moving trucks are pulling up and been able to walk that back. So it's an important data point, but I guess helpful to all of us to be mindful of what it captures and what it doesn't. Same for the question of where do people go? I know when the state was thinking about planning for this crisis, they wanted to know what happens when people are evicted. And the thing is, we don't track it really. We don't really know, I think, where people go. We have guesses about where they end up, but I think that's another thing for us to look at going forward is. You know, I think we also sometimes assume the other systems are going to catch people. And while we have them in place, they don't always catch everyone. But, you know, we're in the courts and so certainly if any of you, your constituents are facing eviction and want to consult with a legal resource, you know, CLA is available, including our subsidiary agency, Central West Justice Center. That's regardless of immigration status. Between the two agencies, we will serve them. And the sooner they get to us, the better. The later it gets, the harder it can be to roll things back.
Attorney, thank you so much for your work and your perspective. If you could put your contact information in the chat and Rose, if you could perhaps do the same. I know I've certainly referred several constituents to both of your organizations, as have my colleagues, and invaluable resource for individuals when they're, you know, in that stage. I want to move for our final 10 minutes to Wayfinders. Wayfinders is the regional administrative agency for all of these funds that we have been speaking about. And that's why I wanted to reserve a good portion for them. We're joined by their CEO, Keith Ferry, as well as Jeanette Vigo. So Keith and Jeanette, if you could share with us what Wayfinders is seeing on the ground, working with administering these funds and how we can continue to be helpful, please give you the meeting at this time.
Thank you for the time today. Good afternoon, everyone. As other speakers have described, yes, it's been an overwhelming demand for these resources. When we talk about RAFD, but we also have other emergency financial assistance programs, those that were made available through the city of Springfield have made a great impact on many households. There's also IRMA, which is for households that earn up to 80% of area median income, which can help homeowners and renters as well. And those have all been at play here in terms of what we put to work in the city of Springfield. And just to give you a sense of numbers, in all of FY20, for the two counties of Hampton and Hampshire, which we're their regional administering agency for with RAFD, we helped 756 families. So that's FY20. So far in FY21, we have helped 2,110 families and they've gotten resources totaling $7.7 million. And that's using all those different sources combined, the city money, the state money, both RAFD and IRMA, putting that to work. As Rose described, there's been an overwhelming amount of applications. When the eviction moratorium ended in October of 2020, we received 2,500 applications in that one month. Right now, we receive applications at a clip of about somewhere between 60 to 70 applications a day. It peaks at different times. We've had a peak in January where we're at 100 applications a day. I'm not sure what always drives those peaks. Sometimes it can be different things. We have done a lot to try to connect with other organizations in the community as, for all the folks who are on the call today, as well as many others from school systems and community groups to really try to train and engage those community action agencies on how to help people complete applications, both virtually or help them through calling Wayfinders directly and helping them assist them provide those, get quality applications in. I would say one of the biggest challenges we have is getting complete applications. We actually have a whole team of people who chase people applicants and help them complete their applications once we get them in the door. To give you a sense of kind of where we are in terms of applications right now that we're processing, the total overall, in terms of all the capacity that we have, we're currently processing 3,047,500 applications. And that's a combination of what we're doing in-house at Wayfinders and then work we're doing through our processing center that THTD has brought into play to help some of the high-volume regional administering agencies around the state. So in Boston and in Lowell and a couple other places where we're seeing peak volumes like we see here, they brought in extra capacity. One of the questions was raised about kind of processing times and those have been changing rapidly. When we first got those 2,500 applications and we were really slammed and still building our capacity to do, to do the work that we're doing now, we had tremendous backlog. When I say a backlog, I mean, applications that we haven't, we didn't touch, we didn't look at because we were working on other applications. Today, we have no untouched application. Many applications come in and within 72 hours, somebody looks at those applications, reviews them for completeness and contacts if they're incomplete, which about half of the ones that come in the door are incomplete, we immediately contact folks to to request the additional missing information. And then for those that are complete, we check them for eligibility and then we continue to process them. Right now, our kind of seven-day rolling average for processing is around 35, 38 days from application to payment for an eligible applicant. That's significantly down from where we were, which was, you know, at the peak, you know, somewhere between eight to 10, 10 weeks. So we expect that to go down a little bit more because we're, and Jeanette will talk about this in a second. We're adding We're adding more capacity, you know, and just to give you a sense of how much, you know, back in January, mid-January, so just a little over a month and a half ago, you know, we were, we were up near 6,000 applications. So, and again, the applications are coming in and going out real time. So if you can't say, you know, there's not a fixed point in time, but you can see that the volume's going down. And I expect by the end of this month that we will be, we are already keeping pace with the number of applications coming in, the amount that we're processing. One of the, one of the things that we are doing to do that, or I should say, let me turn it over to Jeanette to talk about what we have done so far to increase our capacity and assist as many people as possible through our organization.
Thank you, Keith. And before Jeanette goes, I just want to let folks know, we do have a 5 o'clock general government meeting. So we will need to end promptly at 5. So if you do have questions for Keith or Jeanette on Wayfinders, we might need to send those questions out to them directly. But I think we are actually going to probably schedule another meeting to talk a little more about, about this in the near future. So Jeanette, we'll give Jeanette the last word. I just want to be respectful that Chairman Edwards has a meeting in three minutes and we are all sharing one virtual Zoom account here. So we really appreciate everybody's patience and all of the information presented here, extremely important. I know Counselors, I know I'm benefiting from it. I think all of our colleagues are. So Jeanette, if you want to share with us that and then we'll close out the meeting and we'll make sure to provide your contact info for everybody.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you, Keith, for, for sharing all of that information. So what we've done to speed up the process, you know, you all are aware, our application is now all electronically. I know that both Rose and Jane mentioned our work in the courts. This database allows us the opportunity to have quick access to information, which again stops evictions, which has been great. We are, again, we have increased capacity. We are meeting with the teams on a daily basis to be really transparent with the data and show a point in time of where we are that morning and what goals we have for the day to bring some of those numbers down so that we can be sure that we are approving applications pretty quickly. Just to share quickly, at the end of the fiscal year last year, we, in fiscal year 20, we ended the fiscal year with six FTEs. To date, we have 48 full-time and between full-time, part-time and volunteers, we have 48 employees. By March 31st, we will be at 74 employees. Again, our response to ensuring that we can continue to keep up with the volume that's coming in and as Keith mentioned, having a workflow process that allows us to touch applications within 72 days so that we don't have a backlog. Because again, yes. Sorry, 72 hours, not 72 days, so that we don't have a backlog. Because again, it's really important to define that a backlog means applications that are not touched and all applications for Wayfinders are touched within three days.
Thank you so much, Jeanette and Keith. I apologize that we hit right at time. But I really do want to thank all the organizations and city staff and directors that joined today. I think we will follow up soon relative to some of the action items that we've discussed on this call, including when we may be able to see additional funds administered by the city replenished and also any more federal dollars that are coming in in the near future. So I thank everybody for joining the meeting. I will make sure all of the data and contact info for these organizations is transmitted by our staff and entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
I'm moved.
Made by Council Davila. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Allen. Thank you all so much.